Meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV. If anybody would like a copy of the broadcast, please feel free to reach out to a member of the school committee or the administration. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes. We do have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first are the minutes of the September 28th, 2017 regular school committee meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion from Scott, seconded by Jim. We have four in favor and one abstention. And the second meeting minutes that we have to approve were from the executive session on November 3rd, 2016. I believe Joe and Scott, you two were not at this meeting. So, do I have a motion to approve the executive sessions from November 3rd, 2016? Motion from Jen, seconded by Mike. All in favor, four in favor and two abstentions. Next order of business is announcements, correspondence and distributions. Do we have any announcements or correspondence? Joe?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've got one, just a reminder that the Milford High School homecoming game is this Friday, I'm sorry, is Friday, October 13th at seven on the field. Student, staff, family and alum are invited to attend. And I do believe that cheerleaders and youth football players who wear their jerseys are free for admissions. So, be there.
Good. Actually, I have two items for announcements, correspondence. First one is, is just want to thank Judy Dagnyce and the staff for our breast cancer awareness. It's October, obviously Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We'll be wearing our ribbons as we talked about in our last meeting for both this meeting as well as for the future. Certainly encourage everyone to, you know, take the precautionary measures and, you know, thanks everyone for supporting that. Second piece is, had an opportunity last night to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony along with Joe Cowery and Jim LaGore. Kevin, I believe you were there as well?
I may have been.
You know, the, for our ribbon cutting ceremony for the Milford Federal in high school bank branch. What a tremendous event this was. Number one, it was Will Kincaid, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen was there, Brian Murray, our state representative was there. Staff members from, not just the folks that are working in the branch here from Milford Federal, but their CEO was there, there were probably half a dozen or so of their staff members that were there. Very well attended event. It was great to see the students that were there talking about it. It's, there were a couple of things that were really impressive to me. For somebody who works in that industry, it was neat to see the way the bank branch and that sort of the banking side. However, the other side that I looked at was just the excitement that the kids and the level of engagement, level of knowledge, even just in such a short period of time that these kids, that are students, have really been able to engage in, is amazing. And that bank branch looks like it's always been there. It fits right in. It's not something, I'll be honest with you, I was, I was a little hesitant when I heard where the location was going to be of how that was going to look like. Was it going to stick out? Was it going to fit in with sort of the, and sort of draw not so positive attention to itself? It's phenomenal. And the fact that it's dedicated to a student as well as, that actually did the artistry and the architecture, schematic designs to it is amazing. So, you know, just great event and it was great to see so many people there. So, look forward to seeing its continued success. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other correspondence or announcements? Jim?
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone of the fun run, which is going to be on October 14th. You can sign up on the Milford Public Schools website. It's going to start at nine AM and the start places or the locations will be at Stacy and the town park.
Great. Anything else?
No.
That's it? Thank you. Next order of business is invitation to speak. Do we have anyone here who would like to address the board? Anyone here today? Next order of business is the report of the superintendent of schools. First item for discussion is the school start time.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Dr. Periello, our school physician, to come up to the, to address the committee. Dr. Periello expressed an interest in talking about school start times, which has become kind of a conversation that's been happening across the country as well as in Massachusetts. And Dr. Periello wanted to share some data and some information about, you know, from the kind of pediatrician-physician perspective. So, thank you, Doctor, for joining us this evening.
I had, I had, I was, some studies have been done over the last, I don't know, four, five, six years. I hope you all got copies of it, you were supposed to, but maybe it'll help as time goes on. You know, I really want to thank Dr. McIntyre for inviting me to speak before the committee today and I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to say a few words about this very important topic. I promise I will not talk long. It's going to be very short and sweet, I hope, yeah. I think that we all believe that adolescents do not get enough sleep. And I think that's been given for generations. But now, over the last few years, because of the evidence that's come out, it shows that adolescent absolutely do not get enough sleep. It all has to do with the circadian rhythm of biological functions that determine this sleep-wake cycle in our bodies. In adolescents, and we're referring to people what, 12 to 20 years old, the sleep-wake cycle is different from their earlier years. So, because of the delayed release of melatonin in the body, that's the hormone that we have that puts us to sleep or helps us to go to sleep, it comes out later in the, when puberty begins. And so, they really can't get to sleep before 11 o'clock at night. So, what happens is, we all know that adolescents need at least eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep through the night in order to function well. And that being the case, if they're not to sleep at 11, then they really can't get up at 7:30 or before that and still function well because they're not getting their eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep. It's simply, as simple as that, really. And the American Academy of Pediatrics, which I have been a member of since 1970, considers this a public health issue. So, the strong evidence has emerged over the years that the kids in middle and high school do not get enough sleep if they start the school prior to 8:30. So, what happens when you do implement this? And this has been implemented in several states already and a lot of towns, even in Massachusetts and cities. And several things have been shown to happen if you start the middle and high school later or at least 8:30 or later. One is they get a better night's sleep and they feel better throughout the day. Two, they do much better academically. Three, they have less anxiety, less depression, less suicide ideation. They are less likely to have automobile accidents. That one actually kind of, was kind of a little bit of a shock to me because of the sleep deprived business, the adolescents, of course, are notorious for getting into accidents anyway. But if they're sleep deprived, it's even worse. And it has been shown really significantly that if you start schools later, there are less accidents by the adolescents, anyway. They're also likely to be healthier, less likely, less likely to be obese, less likely to have high blood pressure, and they're more likely to actually show up for school, less likely to be late, and they're more likely to graduate. These things have all been shown in different studies and different towns that have been done and we can prove it. So, what we're trying to prove is that the evidence is overwhelming, that our children need more sleep. And the best way to ensure this is to have a later school time for all adolescents, which would include middle and high school. I know that this is a formidable thing to do. It changes people's lives. But I think the bottom line of it is, we would hope that this is going to change the kids' lives for the better. And that's, that's, that's the idea. I think this is absolutely the right thing to do. Several states have already implemented this and many cities and towns across the country have done it. And of course, they've been doing this in Europe for a long time, starting later. I don't think there's a school in Europe that starts before nine o'clock. So, it's, there's certainly evidence to support all of this. So, that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any. If I can't answer it, I'll get the answer for you. So, I'll find it. So, anybody have anything to?
Mike?
Couple of questions, Doctor. Technically, what is the age group of an adolescent?
Age group of?
An adolescent, what age?
Well, yes, well, I'm referring to 12 to 20. You can, you can adjust that because there are some studies to show that even the first year of college and possibly into the second year of college, a lot of the kids have the same kind of problems that they have in high school and middle school because they do not get enough sleep.
And is there a statistic that what they are, what's the average of what they are getting right now for sleep? Like, you're saying that technically they should get eight and a half to nine and a half hours?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. Most of them get less than seven and probably six. Yeah. That would be about, about right, I think, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Dr. Periello, first former, thank you for coming this evening.
Oh, no, it's my pleasure.
And thank you for the information. I have two of these adolescents at my house and I can assure you that getting up in the morning is not the easiest time of their day. So, I appreciate all the work that you've done and certainly, you know, sort of living through the real life experiences. I know you have, it's been a couple of years, but I know you've lived it as well, having raised children. One of the things, I guess my question is, is there any, is there any downside to starting early? Just thinking about our grade configuration. So, it's only a little bit early, but we may be having 10, we may have 10 or 11-year-olds because of the way our grade configuration is. Any downside of having them start a little bit later? So, if we were to do this, just thinking about it from a logistical perspective, I would think we'd want to go full school rather than sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, having sixth grade start at a different time than seventh and eighth grade, but that's when the teenager year sort of starts. Are you seeing anything that would make any different, you know, is it starting as early as 10? Or is that still, are we, are we starting to bump up against, sort of going the other direction for being an issue?
You're asking, is there a downside to have kids start later that are actually younger?
Yes.
And as far as I know, and I've done a little bit of work on that, no one has said that there is. The only thing, the only downside is that it does disrupt the family. I mean, particularly, obviously, the parents that are involved in this and they have a certain schedule and it's going, and it's going to change. So, in that respect, it would. But as far as that 11-year-old, I don't think there are too many 10-year-olds in middle li, you know, so the extra hour sleep.
Doesn't hurt anybody.
Certainly can't hurt.
I know. I was reading through, you were going through your presentation and I started to figure out that maybe that I'm still a teenager and that would be why I don't work, function so early as well in the morning. It made me feel younger, it made me feel good.
I think we should all be teenagers to stay there.
Right. But no, I do appreciate that. I think more just for the committee, not necessarily for Dr. Periello. This is something that's been, that's come up a number of ti, a couple of times over the last couple of years. And it's always been the logistical perspective. I think one of my asks would be really of Kevin and Craig and then our administrative team to start to look at school systems that have already done this in Massachusetts. The challenge, of course, is the logistical component. You're really, what you're doing is, is we're going to rearrange busing time, from a timeline perspective, it would require us to, as part of our collective bargaining agreement with the Massachusetts, with the Milford Teachers Association, excuse me, to have this as part of our collective bargaining agreement. Conveniently, we're heading into a collective bargaining time right now with teachers in the 2018 timeline. But I think if we can figure out the logistics, as silly as this may sound to some, it is actually the post-school activities predominantly at the high school level that causes some of the logistical challenges with it. Travel time for sports and alike. So, if we could start to, we won't, so we won't be breaking any ground here. There are other school systems that have started to do that. So, if we could start to do some research, that would be my ask, if the, if it's the pleasure of the rest of the committee as well, that we start to do some research and start to see how that logistically would play out. Because I think at the time, if we're going to look to do this in the more immediate future, now is the time to start to put that in place. Otherwise, we're going to be having to either go through an interim collective bargaining agreement with teachers or we're going to wait until this next contract comes to, comes to an end, which, which we're getting ready to just start one now. So, that would be my ask, if, Mr. Chairman, if that's something the committee would be in favor of.
Yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, obviously, the evidence that you provided is very compelling. There is, it makes a very strong case for moving the start time. And to Scott's point, the challenge that we've had up until this point is the logistics. And I don't know, are you aware of any conversations happening at the state level regarding school start times?
No. But I think several states have already done this, like Wyoming and Colorado and Minnesota. But my own feeling about it is, this should not be a state mandate, you know, coming down, okay, everybody has to do this. It's really a local thing, the school thing. I just, I just found out actually a couple of days ago that Bellingham changed as of this year, I don't know if everybody's aware of that, the time for the, starting the high school at eight, 8:30, 8:45, and in the middle at nine or 9:15 or something like that.
Yeah, they just pushed everything back.
This school year, I really wasn't aware of that. Actually, I am, I'm the school physician in Bellingham too, but I had nothing to do with that. So, I always consider Milford my hometown.
You take full credit here, we believe you. Missed opportunity, you could have taken credit, nobody would have been wiser.
Yeah. I believe there are also some, some school districts in the Hockamock League that do have a later start time as well. And they've been able to manage through some of the logistics and scheduling out a lot of the after-school activities.
It's coming up more and more and I think more communities are at least exploring the issue. I know a couple of other local communities have made the shift within the last year or two as well.
And when this came up the last time, if I recall, I thought we had Bob put together a survey.
We did.
And I can't remember if it was just teachers, if there was teachers and parents, I don't know if we can.
We actually did it with teachers, parents, and actually we even asked students.
We did.
Last time.
Maybe we can dust that off.
I can see if we can drag that data out and if we can't, we can, you know.
Walk the frame again.
Maybe.
Well, things have changed since, since three years ago. So, I mean, as far as evidence and this really seems like, and I think it's, it's going to happen.
Yeah.
I think all across the country, this country, as in Europe, it's, they're going to start at later times. It's going to happen, I think. It's a matter of doing what's right for here, for your school, for your people and the parents here and the students.
And to your point, Dr. Periello, actually, three years ago, the feedback was actually pretty overwhelming of, yeah, we'd love to see a later start time. The feedback was actually very, very much in support of this data. It was, we had just finished a teacher's contract negotiation. That was actually part, it was the combination of that and the two logistical pieces. One, it was we had just done a teacher's contract negotiation. We'd just completed it, so we were heading into that. It would have required us to do interim negotiations.
Do it again.
In addition to the logistical piece of, it was still, to your point, it was a different time. This is moving fairly quickly. And logistically, we probably would have been in the lead, that was the very leading edge of it, and just trying to get the logistics from the after-school activities that we just talked about. But the feedback from the teachers, the parents and even some of the students was, they were, they were supportive of it, which is good.
Actually, I'm happy to hear that. I did not know that and that's good. Makes it easy.
I wonder how it would affect elementary schools on the back end, so when they dismiss?
What does that "our" mean for families in trying to make arrangements for their kids? You know, I, I understand the benefits of it for adolescents. But you were right when you said it kind of turns the family upside down a little bit.
Well, it depends on what fits here and I wouldn't know that. You guys know that better than I. But what happened in other places, they've, they've made the time for the elementary schools even earlier. Some cases, if that's what fits, leave them alone if that's what fits. But I don't think it's, would be a benefit to actually have elementary schools stop purposely later. So, but if that's what your wish is and if that's what everybody wants, fine, I don't think it'll hurt. But, yeah, it does, it does change things, obviously, and it's going to inconvenience some people, I'm sure. And, but as far as after-school activities, that's another thing that people have gone into in depth. It's really only an hour. So, you can kind of, and then people have done different things, like not have gym for the, for those that are doing, do sports afterwards and they make up that hour that way. So, I guess there are a lot of ways you can, you can do it. But it certainly can be done and really, I can't emphasize enough that it is, it is the right thing to do. Yeah, so.
I think there's a lot of support around this table for that and doing the right thing on that. It's, I don't think it's, at least for me and just kind of reading the room a little bit, I don't think, I don't think there's any naysayers on that. I think it's, to your point, it's not an if, it's a when. And it's sort of working through the logistics. I do think, in addition to obviously doing some of that due diligence, I think having our, our negotiating team be ready with that information and do our homework upfront might make that as part of the conversation.
The only, the only caution I would add, if I could jump in, is, and I want to just, you know, to the viewing public, is it's not like flipping a switch. There's a lot of complicated logistical pieces to this that we have to consider. It's, you know, deciding the element, because we switched the high school and say middle school schedules, it could potentially shift either the elementary schedules back or earlier. There's the athletics and extracurricular component and there's the transportation component. And I know, you know, some districts have gotten hung up on shifting the transportation and the busing, but I think they're all manageable issues, but it's, it's probably going to take some time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if it's a direction the committee decides that they want to go and it's probably something that we'd have to do over a couple of years because it would also impact, like to Craig's point, you know, childcare and daycare issues for some of the younger students. But again, I think all of these things are manageable, but I think some of it's going to take some time to kind of work through.
I think a lot of it just depends on how we were to do it as well. I mean, there's the same number of bus runs if we were to, if we were to just, there's the same number of bus runs that would need to be done regardless of what time that start time is. If we do the stag, if we do the distance and time, and obviously it'd be something that we'd want to solicit feedback from Lenny on, our transportation director, and then, you know, just working through those logistics. I think it's, I think it's from a timeliness perspective, I think the, if we are going to make these changes and we can work through these logistics, I personally am in favor of the sooner the better. And it's not to say that we don't, to Dr. Periello's point, we keep elementary school at the same start and end time, which makes no difference from a parenting, from a logistical perspective. It disrupts that group of parents the least and could potentially push back the middle school and the high school. That will make some changes as well, but it's actually the last time that those students would need to be, parents would have to seek after-school care. If we said, okay, we'll keep the elementary school at the same time and just push the, stagger the, and just stagger the schools on the back end and see what that time looks like as well. I think there's a number of different mappings that we should be able to move fairly quickly on this, to at least start to get that information and do our research pretty quickly in a timely manner.
Yeah, I think, I think everyone, at this point, everyone understands that the pros for moving forward with this. It's the, the challenges that we need to focus on.
And the devil will be in the details, but at the same time, I think when we look at other school systems, we'll look at their implementation timelines as well.
Yeah.
And what they did and why they chose to go either a one-year implementation plan, a two-year plan or a three-year plan and why they did that and what was successful and what wasn't successful based on that.
Yeah. So, if we could have some sort of analysis that's done that highlights each of the challenges and what some, because every, every challenge is going to have a few different options, right?
Absolutely.
So, if we can have something like that put together, then we can make a much more educated decision.
Yeah, and we'll try to, we'll try to look at what the choice points are, what some of the pain points were.
Right.
In the process and what some school districts learned going through it and what it does with the management.
And what if any, what if any financial impact there was on both parents, you know, so the families.
Yeah.
As well as obviously on the school system.
Mm-hmm. We can do that.
Great. All right. Any other questions or comments? And then the stakeholder feedback's an important piece of it.
Yeah, and let's see if we can figure that out and if not, we can kind of come up with a plan to do a little maybe surveying.
Yeah.
For the next couple of months.
Okay.
All right.
Actually, I would thank, thank you all so, for all the information. It's very helpful. You know, I think something like this is such a big undertaking and I know that we all know that the minute transportation doesn't go well, that's, that's what runs our district and that's what gets parents most irate when something doesn't go well. So, I think, to everyone's point, I don't think there's any naysayers in the group. I think, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think all the research really speaks for itself. I think it won't hurt us to take the time to do the due diligence because if we do it, you want to do it right the first time.
Correct.
Rather than have done it and figure out, oh, we forgot this and forgot that. So, are we thinking of putting together, or is there already a start time study group or something like that?
You know, I think, we've kind of talked about it internally and obviously there's some people that make a lot of sense to be on there.
Yeah.
You know, Lenny Markle and obviously the transportation director.
Yeah.
Kathy, Craig.
Yeah.
Peter Boucher, the athletic director.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we probably want an elementary and secondary principal.
Yeah.
And maybe some faculty representation as well.
Yeah. I think that, that sounds like a good direction.
To at least get, to at least get the ball rolling and then maybe we'll expand that group as we move forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Dr. Periello.
Thank you very much. Letting me, letting me talk, that was great. Yes, I'm going to go watch the games.
Anytime.
We're going to try to get there soon too.
Like I tell you, the Red Sox game's not too, looking too good.
I know. It isn't. It's. All right. So, I want to, I want to share, we talked a little bit about, yeah, I love the Milford Public School campaign and I want to show the committee and the public our initial video and kind of talk about the concepts of some videos we're talking about in the future to really promote this.
I love the Milford Public Schools because it is a great place to learn and the teachers are nice. My favorite teacher is Ms. Hart. She is my favorite because she is nice and she helped me when I didn't know math problems. Hi, my name is Shannon Cormier and I'm an incoming senior at MHS. I have lived in Milford all my life and within the 17 years here, I have been given many opportunities to succeed that have varied from academics to athletics. I really enjoy school and I have my elementary school teachers to thank for that. They always made learning a fun experience for me and this trend only continued as I went into middle school and high school. MHS offers numerous courses for students to take varying from sciences to art to technology classes. These classes have allowed me to widen my education experience by showing me both my strengths and weaknesses. I've also learned these things through athletics. I've been on both the varsity field hockey and varsity softball team since my freshman year. The athletic programs at Milford are honestly like no other high school in the area. The coaches create a fun and competitive atmosphere to help both individuals and the team to improve on skills and sportsmanship. The athletes are also given opportunities to become better leaders through different leadership conferences supported by our athletic director, Mr. Boucher, and the Milford Boosters Club and other organizations. The community here is always finding ways to support the children. The teachers and coaches in Milford genuinely care about their students and athletes and push us all to be our very best. This is among the many reasons why I am proud to be a part and involved in this town. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caden Calvin and I'm a rising senior at Milford High School. To start off, I would just like to thank Superintendent McIntyre for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I have lived in Milford nearly all my life and in my time in the school system, not once have I wanted to be anywhere else. The teachers, the students, the environment itself, all things I don't think I could find anywhere else. The reason for this is opportunities that this town and the school system have provided for me. I have been elected to go to numerous conferences to make myself a better leader and person in general. I have been given the chance to lead others in a sport that I love. I was even given the opportunity to spend a week at the beautiful campus of Stonehill[1702.91] I was even given the opportunity to spend a week at the beautiful campus of Stonehill from Massachusetts Boys' Team. All of these opportunities to better myself are given to me by those in Milford, and for that, I will always have a soft spot in my heart for this town. Thank you for your time and enjoy Milford for the wonderful place that it truly is. The Milford school system is amazing, and there is no school better than Milford High School in my mind. My favorite part of the school and what feels a great start to my day is the music department. This department has the most energetic and friendly group of kids I know in the school, and no one knows how to have fun time like the music kids. I love how the department itself breaks down into band, chorus, and orchestra, with some people doing two of them, even further into instruments or voice range. These small divisions become very similar to families within the larger family of the whole department. Everyone is willing to help out someone else who is struggling with music or even other school problems. From my experience, I can say that music department helps upcoming freshmen ease into the school and helps them make new friends and get comfortable at high school. The upperclassmen are always available to show a new student around and give them a friendly face to nail in the halls. The kids make, the kids make up the music department, but the teachers are what make it amazing. I can strongly say that my favorite teachers in the school come out of this department. They take so much pride in the work and they make learning the music so much fun. They teach us how to be great people and they always push us to be better at what we do. Above all of this, I just love music in general. I love to practice my instrument, and I love playing in concerts even more. The feeling of working really hard on a solo in preparation for a concert and then nailing it is one of the best I've ever felt. Music makes me so happy and always puts me in a good mood, and some of my favorite pieces have come from this department. The music department is truly amazing. What I love most about teaching in the Milford Public Schools is being able to work with students from such a supportive community. I love getting to know my students on a personal level, so they grow not only academically, but socially and emotionally as well. I've always thought that the conversation at the end of the day while we're waiting for the bus is just as important as my lessons. My goal is to help foster students who believe in themselves and become lifelong learners that die with the importance of academics in Milford Public Schools. I love seeing children come into school smiling and excited about what is gonna happen on that day. I've always felt that Milford is a community that defines the word community by how everyone works together to help make Milford a better place for our children. That is made possible by the great colleagues that I get to work with every day of living. It's such a fantastic place to work, and I'm fortunate to be able to interact with such an encouraging, friendly staff. I've always thought that Milford is a great place to grow up and live, and a huge part of that is the dedication of our teachers.
Hello, my name is Viola.
And my name is Julia. We like the Milford Public Schools because Milford is the very first place we came to and we are very attached to it. Aham ben hibba madaris Milford, alashan Milford hu awol ma kain ginil. It's also the very first place where we learned English, which is very important for us. We also love the teachers here in Milford. Awala kamayn awol ma kain talimna fi englisi, wadihaha mohemma jiddan dinah. Aham kamayn ben hibba l-mistat hina flaford. They always care about you, make sure you learn everything you need to learn. Umm, alatul bihtalun bina, wbiit akidu aham altalim kallaha, mofur matalim. Teachers here in Milford always engage us and will let you teach us. Mistat hina flaford, alatul biyazibuna bitabeeetabina. A little story we would like to tell you is that our parents were looking for a house. Qasas zghayran ben hibbim alhaal komi, enu babana mu mitna kanu, bidawroha libiit. Our dads searched in towns near Milford, like Mendon and Hopkinton. Babana kan bihussal amakin gabbal Milford, zei Mendon wa Hopkinton. But when we hear that, we say, no, no, no. Lakken lama aham, lama ho biyolina keda, aham lek, lek, lek. We will always say in Milford.
My son had to go through an education process recommended by one of his insightful teachers early in his school career. We knew he was having some difficulty, but we weren't sure why or exactly how we could help him. Fundamentally, as human beings, we are only afraid of what we don't know. So have that fear be about your child, and the fear is at a whole different level. My husband and I had a million questions about the plan and the process and what it would all mean. We were told it would be comprehensive and not to worry. Well, we were a little overwhelmed, and it was scary, and we did nothing but worry. Throughout the process, we sent many emails, we had a million questions, and we made many emotional phone calls, all of which were received with kindness and compassion, professionalism, and swiftness. The teachers and specialists who were coming together with the plan treated us so well and so, with such dignity and respect, that we did everything we were supposed to do, everything they told us to do, because we had trust and full confidence in the people that were coming together to make this plan. At the conclusion meeting, where all the plans and all the questions and all the answers were put in place, we were confident and we were thrilled, and we couldn't ask for a better team because of how we were treated. We were heard, and as a result, our son had a wonderful plan. Fast forward to today, he's doing well, he's doing very well. Why do we love Milford Public Schools? Because communication is a priority, because working together as parents and professionals as a team is a priority. My children go to school happy and confident because they can hear and they can see us working as a team, and we are ever grateful.
All right, thanks Kevin. Any questions or comments regarding the, the video?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman, no, just, I thought it was fantastic, I, I love that there was the incorporation of the schools in the background, we incorporated students from multiple schools. Parent at the end was fantastic, I thought that was great. I love that it was done in multiple languages, representing the diversity of students that we have in, in the varying grade levels, and the kids, I mean, the, the students were awesome, I mean, that's obviously my, my favorite part. But, and then, but I really just, I, I love the, the genuine expression of, of, of care for, for the Milford Public Schools and the experience that the students are having, I, I think it's, I think it's fantastic. I, I think it's, you know, I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm smiling, and I'm sitting here going, you know, I, I remember as a, as an alumni of the schools, you know, hearing some of these things and thinking, wow, you know, you know, the music, the music program really is really good here, and it, and it's funny, I actually wrote down naming my music teacher when we were, when they were talking about that, and thinking about the sports and now having students going through, so, I, I, I think it's very well done, I, I think that the community will, will certainly enjoy it and, and hopefully continue to embrace Milford Public Schools, and it talks about, you know, Mikey, you always talk about, and I, I love the words that you use, which is, if you, if you're never, if you're not sure, or you, if you're not sure what's going on in Milford Public, if, if you don't think things are going well in Milford Public Schools, then you haven't been in Milford Public Schools. And I think it's, it couldn't be better put, I think you do, you know, it's, this is wonderful.
Mike?
Again, you know, Kevin and your team, great job. A question, how are people gonna see it, is it gonna play at the Milford TV?
So, so we, yes, we've done a couple of things, um, one is, this was part of our opening day presentation to our teachers.
Okay.
Um, we had a couple of other folks that couldn't be there, and Joe was one of them actually, that actually presented in front of our full, um, teaching audience, um, on, on opening day, and we also share it on social media, I believe it's on our Facebook page. Rob, do you know if we're running it on, on Milford TV?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're running it on Milford TV as well.
Okay, it's got it quite a few places.
Yep, yeah, so we're, we're popping it out there, and it's getting some good, some good viewers and exposure.
Great, thank you.
I haven't seen it on Facebook yet, is it popping up?
It's on a few, it's on a few pages, it's on, um, it's on Milford Public Schools, I, I put it on the, uh, the Milford Skyler Hawk Nation
Yep.
page, um, and I believe, it might have been on Milford TVs too, I can't remember, I,
I'm not sure if it's on the, the Facebook page.
I can't put it up there or not, but it's, it's been on a couple.
Is it on the Facebook page?
We, we shared it, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
No?
So, just one, one other piece is, we're gonna be doing shorter promos throughout the year with, um, an I love the Milford Public Schools theme, which will be probably somewhere between like forty-five seconds and two minutes, that will, will engage more community members in, and kind of get that content out there, and really, it's, it's an opportunity just to kind of build the pride and, and love we all have for the Milford Public Schools. So I just wanted to share that with the committee, just kind of share what kind of what we're doing from a marketing and communications perspective.
One of the things we talked about, and this might be a little difficult to get off the ground, but I think it would have a really positive impact, um, is having notable alumni
Absolutely.
record a message or, you know, send a message about why they love the Milford Public Schools, and we have a lot of notable alumni here, so if there's anyone that you know that you can reach out to and encourage them to, to help promote the Milford Public Schools, we'd appreciate that.
And if I could just add, um, too, I want to thank Milford TV, who's phenomenal in putting this together, they've been a great partner. Rob and Liz are just phenomenal to work with, um, they put up with when Craig and I have to do a, a video together, and it takes, you know, five minute video takes about two and a half hours to kind of, to kind of pull off.
Get good bloopers out of it. For real, it's coming. Throw that next.
To be honest with you, on those same lines, Joe, um, we should do one.
And I'd love to get, I'd love to get, get the committee involved.
Yeah.
Have the school committee, have the school committee along with the administrative team do one, do one, do one big joint one.
Yeah, I'd love to do that.
These are faces for radio, but.
There's several of us that have that face for radio issues.
Um, uh, anything else on?
That's, that's, that's all I have for this one.
All right.
Just wanted to share it though.
Thank you.
Yep.
Craig, you're up next, curriculum council update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just wanted to give everyone an update about our Curriculum Development Day last week. Once a month, we pull together all the C T Ls from across the different buildings. Uh, this year, I tried something different with them. Typically, in years past, we all come together as one giant council, um, and you're talking fifty people in a room all talking about different initiatives. So, this year, we started, um, and we met, I met each grade level by school, sorry, I met with each school for an hour at a time. And on the, the agendas for those meetings, um, we were discussing curriculum mapping assessments, and I was, I just wanted to get a feel for where they were as a department. Um, what came out of those meetings, from the takeaways from Milford High School, and I tried to condense it into just common themes. The things that we talked about were, uh, first, student engagement and asking questions about how we can keep students engaged in the curriculum, uh, and these are gonna be long, year-long kind of questions that we're, we're trying to unpack. They wanted to engage parents more and engage community members, they felt like they had a lot of good things going on within their departments, but the message wasn't always getting out, and they were wondering how they could do a better job getting that message out to parents. Uh, they wanted, they talking about curriculum alignment, and not only horizontally amongst the same grade level, but vertically. They want to talk to the middle school teachers, they want to talk to elementary teachers, and, and make sure that they have a cohesive K through twelve curriculum, particularly with their understanding by design templates and mapping the curriculum using those templates that we created last year. Uh, technology integration, they want to understand how they could use the technology tools that they have available to them to enhance what they do in the curriculum, uh, in their classrooms. Uh, inclusive practices, what are they doing to ensure that all students are able to access every single class at the high school? Uh, one exciting thing that they were talking about was interdisciplinary studies and just different departments working together to create units of study, which for, for, um, high schools is kind of unprecedented, because you have your silos, you have your math, your social studies, and all the way down the line, but they were wondering how they could design units to kind of work together, so it goes across the curriculum areas. And then, um, they wanted finally do a program inventory and look at all the programs that they offer throughout the high school, and take a look at the schedule and see if it matches up. See if what they're offering for program study fits with the schedule. So they, we're gonna be looking at that, uh, and looking to see if we're limited by, limiting our programming because of the schedule. At Stacy, one of the big takeaways there was understanding by design and continued work with, with mapping curriculum using that format. They were wondering how second step, the second step program would fit in their current schedule. To, to run programs like that, you need a, almost like a homeroom period or some kind of advisor block, so they were looking at that. They talked about placements in, in grouping for eighth graders, and they wanted to look at the practices of placing students and how they go about doing that to make sure that it's fair and make sure that everyone has access to, to those courses. Assessment data, what kind of data are they collecting in their assessments? And is it telling them enough about their students? And then finally, technology integration, how can we maximize the use of the technology? And then finally, how can we measure the growth? What is it, what are we getting out of the technology? From the elementary schools, same thing, common theme is the understanding by design templates. Um, and understanding, for elementary schools, a little different. We need to work on understanding the difference between what a program is and actually developing a unit. They have a lot of scripted programs at, at the elementary school, and we're kind of getting confused with, do we take those and map them in this template, or do we create our own kinds of units? So, those are conversations that we're having. Uh, they also were interested in the vertical and horizontal alignment, uh, and agreeing on what is, what a year's worth of growth looks like across every classroom. So, classroom teachers getting together and talking about that, what does a year's worth of growth look like? What do we expect from every student when they leave this classroom? Um, social, emotional learning, how do we focus on our individual learners rather than the curriculum that needs to be taught? I think over the last few years, we've emphasized curriculum needs and, and focused a lot on what we need to teach, and we kind of lost, uh, uh, touch with who we are actually teaching. So, we're trying to change that message with teachers. And professional development, how do we allocate resources to ensure all staff are getting what they need to be adequate, adequately prepared for what they encounter within their classrooms? So, reaching out to teachers and making sure they're getting the, the kinds of, um, development that they need. And I think overall, we're starting to think and act more like a learning organization and starting to use professional learning communities with real focus on data, actionable feedback, and collective inquiry. So, I was, I was impressed with those meetings last week and only see them getting better as the year progresses.
Any questions or comments for Craig? So, um, Craig, just a, a couple of questions, um,
Sure.
Did, did you use the, the draft strategic plan to sort of drive some of these conversations?
Well, yes and no, um, when I, when I wrote out the, just the, the quick agenda of those three things, I think honestly the, the teachers are getting the message, uh, and they're, they're hearing what we're saying and, and the conversations that they're having, um, revolve around those four bucket areas. So, uh, uh, yes, but I think it's coming out, the teachers are, are picking it up.
Yeah, yeah, it seemed like these points that you made were in line with the plan that, that Kevin shared with us la- last week. Um, the, one thing that was interesting, I, I think you were talking about specifically at the high school, that they mentioned student engagement, engaging parents more. Um, just curious, did that trickle down to the Stacy conversation as well, and?
Um, we didn't, that part didn't come up in that conversation, um, and again, they, they, when we went around, when we were meeting, um, it was more about teachers reflecting on what's going on within the school and what's most prominent on their mind. Um, I suspect that it will as the year goes on, but at the first meeting, it didn't.
That seems like a theme that should
Yep.
apply across the entire district, right?
I agree, and that's, that's what we're talking about when we're doing our learning walks with principals, too.
Yeah.
Just, um, you know, certainly to echo some of Joe's comments, I think, you know, it was interesting to hear sort of the different themes from the schools, um, and this goes to something that was a conversation last week, which is, um, and I love the question, this is, what does a year's worth of growth look like? And I guess my question on that is, is, have you, how were, what was the discussion around how do you quantify that?
Um, that, well, that's just it, how do we qua- quantify it? And it's, it's, it's looking at, um, we don't, I'm looking at assessments, and I'm not sure that we have the assessment that can quantify it. So at this point, it's more about looking at the units that we're providing students, and then taking, whatever the unit is, and looking at, um, the assessment that comes out of the unit and, um, looking at it with the teacher in the room next to you.
Yeah.
So, individuals' assessments or projects that students are doing.
Yeah, and, because I, I think about, you know, I think about that of, you know, just like we talked about last week, was what are, what are those metrics, and, and, you know, really, kind of thinking more and more about how do we sort of quantify our, the improvement within the schools? How are we, how are we measuring the, the growth of the district? Um, and, and it starts within the classroom, I mean, obviously, that's what, that's what it's all about, is the, the education of our students. You know, how do you start to quantify that? You know, I, I think it's, it's things like, you know, how is it received, like, you know, a teacher gives a, gives a test at the high school or, or at any of the schools, and it's, you know, the highest grade on the, in a class is, is a seventy. Okay, well, if the highest grade in a class of twenty is, is a seventy, is that a student issue, or is that a, oh, you know what, I may have missed something on my lesson plans this week? And kind of doing that introspection and, and doing that. So I, I would be, I'm very interested to see how that conversation evolves. I, I think starting to put together how we want to start to measure that is gonna be really important, both from a, from a quali, from a, a qualification as well as a quantification.
Mm-hmm. I think, um, the, the point I think, um, in the, the point you just illustrated, for example, it's more, I, I think it's more important for teachers to take the data that they get, talk to somebody who's teaching the same class and look at what what we're doing and seeing how kids are comparing that way.
Yeah.
Not necessarily the names on the paper, but this is the kind of work that my kids are producing, that's the kind of work that your kids are producing. Um, how is it similar? How is it not?
And the, the other piece is that interdisciplinary piece, I think is, I I've, I've watched that, you, when you were principal at Woodland, you did a great job of inter, of integrating that within the school. Um, I've watched it happen at the middle school where you work in teams and it's, it's amazing if you've not had an opportunity to see it. Um, and for the, and for those that are watching at home that maybe have not had their students go through, it's the, when it's, you know, getting into the the fall time of year, when you're studying about the first Thanksgiving and the, and the, and the pilgrims' arrival in Plymouth, um, back in the sixteen twenties in your social studies class, in your science class, you're talking about how they were doing their farming and how their, you know, what was the ecological impact on the area? And in your, um, you know, in some of your other cul, in some of your other cultural classes, it's all integrated around the same lesson plans and and having that interdisciplinary. You're still focused on the same subjects, so there's continuity from one class to another at the same time as the kids are all learning and it's all about their skills. And it's, it's, it's amazing to watch when it actually plays out. So I'm very pleased to hear that that was part of even within the high school, which is great. So I have this chairman.
Jim?
How often does that council meet, Craig?
Once a, once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah.
I was just thinking in terms of budget and some of the things that we're gonna be doing next, when we start to talk about what the council might need in terms of making some of that progress in the buildings, it may be helpful to talk about, do we have the right staff or do we have the right model or do we need to look at budget time and adding some supports to help lead those people? Cause that's a lot of people, the fifty to sixty, and everyone's got competing interests and priorities. And how do we really help, um, gather the data and, you know, I assume all these people are teachers during the day?
Full time, yep.
Yeah, so, um, it might be nice to start thinking about, is this a time that we, you know, make a move to add some positions to support, um, some of this work? Cause you're only one person. It's, it's a lot for, and you just named so many different things that are all equally important in so many different ways. But that looking at data, looking at assessments, um, if we can leverage some coaches or curriculum experts who have nothing else to do but do that, I think it would help, help us grow.
I agree.
Yeah, and and that's gonna be critical as we go into the negotiation process as well because, um, there's gonna be some financial implications there as well, right? So you talked a lot about professional development and it could be a financial implication from a, from a negotiation perspective to get more P D hours in there. You talked about the scheduling and especially at Stacy with that, with the second step. So it could be, perhaps we talk about extending the school day to some extent, right? So there's a lot of different directions we can go in, but knowing what we need to focus on, whether it's the budget or the negotiation will be important.
I agree.
Joe, real quick, Craig, thank you for the update. I I think what's important, and I commend you for allowing the teachers to have input, is but once, and I know you will do this, and you said you're gonna meet once a month, but once people start giving you input, you gotta make sure that you start listening and you start researching and you start moving and implementing some of it. You know, but more importantly is, you know, you've just, you've got to keep the ball going forward because, you know, no matter whether it's in education or it's in business, when you allow, you know, basically your employees to have an input in the, you know, the operation and the process that goes on on a daily basis, they feel very engaged, they feel very, um, um, supported. But it's, you know, as a, you know, assistant superintendent or a manager, however you want to look at yourself, you know, you gotta make sure that, you know, you keep the ball going forward, which I know, I know you will.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Nice job, Craig.
Thank you.
Kathy?
And for the committee this evening, one more, and that is in the amount of two thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion for more. Scott, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
We had thirteen last week.
Yeah, exactly.
I said that to Kathy walking in. I said, you had thirteen last week. How many are we gonna have?
The committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting. We do have a course reimbursement request in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Motion from Jim, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
And there is a gift this evening.
We do have a gift tonight. It's from Waters Church. It's a gift in kind of twenty-four backpacks and various school supplies for Stacy Middle School. I have a motion to accept the gift. Motion from Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor. Thank you to Waters Church for that very generous donation. All right, is that it? Kathy?
That's all I have.
We have a subcommittee updates. I believe only the policy subcommittees met since the last meeting. Jenner, Scott, which one?
Well, we met right before this meeting and we have, again, I think we're certainly doing our due diligence on the religious observance policy. Our superintendent has gathered some feedback on the policy and, um, as an additional measure, staff has asked for a little more time to allow principals to have conversations with faculty and gather a little more information. So we're expecting that feedback to be put together along with, um, some kind of a guidance document that Kevin is gonna put together to help really explicitly explain what the policy is to our faculty this fall. So, um, we're moving forward. I think we're meeting again on October twenty-third to review the, kind of the final opportunity for feedback from staff members. And assuming there are no significant changes, we'll bring that back next meeting with that feedback and with the, um, guiding document to help help staff make sense of that.
I think our, our goal is to have a, a reading, a, a reading of the policy on November second, for our November second meeting.
Okay.
That would be the end time.
Uh, we reviewed, um, kind of a first review of a number of policies, anti-discrimination, sexual harassment. We're gonna take those back and read through them more carefully, looking at the current policy and looking at proposed policies and, um, seeing which, which version we like and what we want to bring back for, I, I, do we call it a first read or?
Yep.
Be a first read.
For the full committee, yep.
First read of updating on those policies. Want to add to that?
Yeah, just the, the final one was on the, um, so that was, those three policies were very specifically the nondiscrimination, sexual harassment and nondiscrimination and anti-harassment procedures. Those are the three policies that we're gonna take under advisement, read through, digest it. We're gonna revisit that as well on the twenty-third of October when we revisit, when we remeet. The final one is on the use of internet and network in the schools. We got a red line policy. We're gonna review that one as well. We did have an opportunity to review that one this evening and our intent is to actually have that ready for a first read, uh, also on November first, on November second, have that be a first reading. And be able to move fairly quickly on that one. So there are minimal changes on that one.
Good.
I will add that in conjunction with that, Kevin had an opportunity to just touch on the Chromebooks and he reiterated to us how smoothly things have gone with the Chromebook rollout, both at, um, the high school and the middle school, and that was great to hear.
Yeah, we, I'm pleased with how that's kind of unfolded. It's been fantastic.
Mike Amelia, using hers over there.
They're debating what they weigh. Do they weigh nine pounds, ten pounds? They're well protected.
That's right.
Great, all right, thank you. Um, so next, next agenda item is future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a reiteration from last week, which is, um, I, I, I've been given some thought to this as well, which is, I guess, Mr. Chairman, one of my questions would be is, as we're, um, and the ask was, is, is we're starting to develop metrics for how do we know things are getting better? I guess my ask is, is, is either adding this as an agenda item or, you know, I want to propose this, proposing this out for you, Mr. Chairman, is, is it a body of work that requires enough extra, you know, sort of more hands on, on from a heavy lifting that we want to, um, create an additional subcommittee for that? With creating a sort of a, a metric-based quantification of how we're measuring the, the for, the growth, the growth of the schools specifically with that overarching theme that Craig, I think, worded it perfectly. What does a year of growth look like? So I propose that to you. It's just a thought for, for the future.
Yeah.
Is that something that is a body of work that requires a subcommittee? So I'd, I'd certainly be happy to serve on that if you're, if the committee would be open to it.
Yeah, so we, we, we have been talking about the, the metrics as part of the, the marketing discussion, especially with the rollout of ClearGov. So we're covering that at the subcommittee level, but it certainly is something that we want Kevin, Craig and the administration to focus on because they're, they're the ones that are really gonna be able to determine what metrics make the most sense for, for the district, right?
Correct.
So to, to your point, I think we should add it as a future agenda item and maybe incorporate it into the strategic plan because we need to be able to put some measures around the plan, right?
Yep.
So, and my thinking is it should be part of that document. Um, so if that's something, I know we have to, you have to come back to present it to us again so that we can vote on it. So maybe it's part of that presentation.
Yeah, so I'm thinking sometime in November, we'll have, I think the metrics will be laid out for all the different, um, subcategories. And then I'll tie that with the goal, my personal goals. I'm like, we'll do it as one shot if that works for the committee.
Does that work for everybody?
Second ma, second meeting in November? Sounds like the second one's already getting filled.
Yeah. Um, and that's probably a good time because then we're, we're gonna, the budget process is gonna start to heat up right after that too.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, I think that works well.
Yeah, I think one, one thing I'd want to add to that is I think, you know, when we talk about a year's growth in a year's time, when we look at a school district and the different ways that we measure growth, I mean, we could be talking about so many different things. Are we talking about reading growth? Are we talking about reading growth at the elementary level? Or are we talking about A P scores? And so I think we want to be careful, uh, because I know we have the major very public metrics and CAS and things like that, um, college acceptances. But, um, I want to make sure that we
I don't think the strategic plan is gonna get to that level.
I, and I agree with that. And I don't think it can, but I think I want to make sure that we always keep in mind that success, we have those large metrics, but we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we have many, many smaller benchmarks along the way that we're measuring success on.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't want to see all that, all those, you know, tiny pieces, um, of data, but I think it might be nice just to keep us, keep reminding us that, um, it's not just the big things, but it's all those small pieces along the way that contribute. And we may see, we may not see growth in one area as we may hope, but there may be a lot of other areas where we are really making progress. And so how do you balance that? Cause there's so many competing, um, areas.
And as you're, as you're, as you're speaking, you kept pausing so that you
I kept fooling you.
One of the things we may do, which I think would be helpful, is maybe have a couple of teachers come in over the course of the year and just share like, you know, how do they view growth and how do they assess students?
Yeah.
And we can show maybe a few different ways it happens. And I think that might give the committee some insight too because everybody has been a student, so they think they know what's happening kind of behind the scenes, but sometimes hearing the teacher's perspective can be very, very helpful and powerful.
Right. Think it would, I, I do think it would be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, very much.
But I, I do think we need to, as a committee, I think we need to establish a set of metrics of how, what do we want to look at? Is it, cause I don't think, to your point, Jen, it's not just M C A S scores. It's not just, you know, graduation rates. It's, it's a combination of things.
Right. Right.
But I think as a committee, we need to come to some, some ground rules, not ground rules, but some agreement on, here are the metrics that we're going to, there's gonna, here are the metrics that we're gonna, for base our, our progress on. What's the year-to-year piece, you know, and and to that point, Kevin and Craig and and the administrative progress of, hey, here's where we are. Here's what we're seeing. We know that there's a lot of pieces. I, I think education is second only to baseball and things that are measured. We seem to measure and there seems to be a key track of records for everything. I, as a result, I think, you know, establishing, you know, some, some key metrics that we see, they'll be leading indicators in other areas that will, that will contribute to those, but tracking that year over year and seeing the milestone growth that goes along with that throughout the year, I, I think is important. I think it's, we, we have, we have very, we being, you know, the school committee as well as Kevin and his team, have very ambitious goals. There, there's, there's a, there's a lot you're trying to get in. Um, and we've heard this from teachers, we've heard this from principals, every second is precious in a classroom. Jen, you're, you're a school teacher, you're still working in public schools as a, as a principal. Every second is precious in a classroom. And, and we want to make sure that we are, as a school committee, creating, giving the budget and policy to be able to support that, but at the same time also, you know, how are we measuring that as well? To that year over year. You know, we talked about when we went through the principal component with, with Josh. He, they, there was one thing that first they all came in and said, this is a level three high school. We need to be a level two. And they all have plans to be able to draw that out. Great, well, let's make sure we're supporting them, but we won't know unless we know how we're going towards reaching those goals and have metrics that support that. So I, I think to that point, I, I agree with you completely, Jen.
So that meeting in November, you'll incorporate it?
Yep, we'll have, yep, absolutely.
Good. Any other future agenda items? All right, any old business? No old business. All right, German, do I have a motion to, there's no executive session tonight.
No executive session.
Yeah, so motion to adjourn, motion from Scott, seconded by Mike, all in favor? All right, thank you.